At the end of July and I go online to print my report so I could give you enough that I need to pay. And no access to that report anymore. And I was just like, the head, you know, and so. Things that they said are just mine. And I was my concerns.
Should we call them in?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think.
We made the bill.
Have have you here for sure? Some of the list of complaints that we're getting from our people to see how they can answer that. Now you'd said that they hadn't did reports for you. For a ninety day.
So, yes, okay, so, um. You know, they were gonna give us deductible credit for the first six months of the year. Um, so we've had like two major surgeries or employees have had surgeries. And these employees have come in saying, you know, I hit my deductible before July first. And they had their surgery after July first. They shouldn't have to pay anything, but they're getting these bills for like five thousand dollars. And the people are requiring payment like right now, you know, um, one required a down payment before he even had the surgery. And that is never, I mean, I've never seen that, you know, not on the plan that we've had before. So I don't know if it's with the plan. I don't know if it's with the provider. I don't know. But, um, and he was like, I already have my deductible. Why would I even have to pay anything, you know? And, um, so he ended up paying and I was like, five thousand dollars that he had to pay. Um, I mean, with the down payment and then afterwards, because they're already wanting our payment.
Sure.
And I asked him about it. I was like, we're supposed to be getting deductible credit. What is going on here? And they're like, well, we just need to make sure all bills go through. And so we have it set for ninety days. Like so after, you know, once we hit ninety days, then we'll do that deductible credit. And I was like. That's not gonna work. You, we have people with bills and they don't wanna go to collections and stuff like that, you know? And they're like, well, if you wanna do it, we can only load it one time. So if you wanna change it to sixty days, we can do that. And I'm like. I don't wanna make that call because you're now you're telling me if we make that call, you load it one time. And and someone didn't get their credit. Now they're gonna have to owe more money. That doesn't even make sense. And so, it's, yeah, that is something that was never stated at all. Like I don't remember ever them saying, oh, yeah, we're not gonna, you know, actually apply the credit for eighty days.
They could load in zero days. That's the day we're gonna load in.
Right. We want it right away. We want our employees to not.
The tour we had before, they said nothing was gonna change and they read our other plan.
They get reimbursed from the insurance.
They will eventually.
Eventually.
But that's a lot of money. Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Well, fine grant.
A grant's a lot of money.
Most people can't afford that out of their checkbook for a month, never mind six months.
And not to mention, you don't feel well.
Right.
On top of all that.
Yeah, because they're obviously not working because they're out on surgery and, you know.
Right, and just not, yeah, not happy at all.
No, and it's, I mean, it it's almost, there was a week, probably what, a week or two ago, that it was, I was getting. Multiple phone calls every single day and I was like, I'm not, I'm not gonna take one more insurance call.
I don't blame you.
I mean, it was pretty crazy, so.
We put them on the agenda for next week and have them come in or Zoom or something so that we can air some of these.
If money, they could be sitting.
They can sit right there.
Okay.
Yeah, we want them here. I want them to look at me.
Yeah, we gotta get this straightened out just for every employee that's having this difficulty.
Who's the one person that we should have here?
Um, I would probably say that Joe Lingle and Keith Duncan, both of them probably need to be here.
Yeah.
And whoever our rep is who's wielding our questions, because if you remember correctly. They came in and then they handed it off.
Right.
And so I think we need to have all parties that once that told us how great this would be and the one that took it over. And maybe he didn't get the memo by.
And all these things that they told us we're gonna get, that we're not getting.
Melissa.
We would know a bunch of things. And I said, we have a report every month.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, every month would be, they can start till July one, right?
Right.
So it'd be.
So we should be getting them sometime now, soon.
But if you're not getting the reports that you need, that's disturbing to me also because. That's just, I mean, bare minimum, what what you have to have. Because Amy used to be able to get the verification that the employees were actually entered into in into Blues Enroll. And they were that, all that information transitioned to Wellmark and they were actually enrolled.
Yeah.
Cause sometimes that there's a communication gap between Blues Enroll and Wellmark and. There's a, you know, the employee will go to the doctor and be like, well, they tell me I don't have coverage or I'm not insured or whatever. And Amy can go back, cause she always kept those in the personnel files. And she'd be like, yep, I enrolled you X Y Z day. You have, you know. Child A and B covered, whatever, blah, 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 all the detail.
Called it Blues.
Blues Enroll.
Blues Enroll.
That's just their tool that they.
That Blue Cross Blue Shield uses?
Yes.
And we're still using Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that specific tool.
Amy doesn't get to function that anymore. They function it. I'm gonna say EBS or.
Right. Yeah, I have to now email the application to, or the enrollment form to this EBS that go between, between Walmart and us. Um, and then wait for them to just hopefully get them enrolled at some point. Like I keep asking, can I get confirmation at the thing?
Right, yeah.
You know, and I don't have, you know, the way I work is I do something, I know my part's done, it's done. You know, I got confirmation, it's done.
Yeah.
Well, now I do my part, but then I have to follow up and follow up and follow up and follow up because. They are not doing their part and they're not giving me confirmation that it's done.
It's like, don't tell me if you're confident when you're resident, preserve a room, that should happen that fast.
Right, exactly.
How hard is that?
Right, right. As soon as they get into Blues Enroll and enter, they should get a confirmation. You should, because.
And I really don't like.
Share that with you.
Yeah, and I I I really just don't like sending out an enrollment form over email, you know, I have to ask for a secure code and then.
Oh, my gosh.
It's been a whole deal. And, um, I just remembered that I had just asked someone. Needs to be terminated and I don't have, I had asked her for a confirmation and I just remember I said that last week and I haven't got that yet. So, I mean, it's just, it's been a deal and. You you know, and they talked about that whole claim process is gonna be seamless. It goes to Wellmark and then goes through EBS and the people won't even get bills. It'll be seamless. It's not.
It's not at all.
They're working bills. They're going to collections.
Oh.
I mean, they're not going to collections yet, but they still, they, you know.
They're going to their little department that calls you at nine o'clock in the morning, wondering when you're gonna pay the bill.
Right.
And you say, well, I have good insurance. I shouldn't be getting this bill.
But we thought we were going to a bigger insurance agent. So a lot of this stuff was gonna be a lot more seamless and taken care of because they've got a bigger organization, you know? I mean, we thought that that was kinda how that was sold to us anyway.
That's how they sold it.
And I'll tell you something.
They painted a hell of a picture, but they like to use lead paint.
Right. And then, you know, the whole other thing of that EBS that we bought down that deductible with, you know? So people have their insurance cards. They're going to the doctor and they verify benefits, but they're only verifying benefits on for Wellmark. You know, they have that little nice little sticker that was put on the card and they're supposed to verify benefits through EBS because that is the lower deductible. And a lot of doctors are saying, that's not our problem, you know, this is your card. We verify it Wellmark and that's all, you know.
So we should have a different.
So we're having issues with that even too.
And I remember Troy saying something, cause he he called me about that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's just all these things that they acted like, you know, everybody's doing this. It's no big deal. It's.
Seamless.
It's a deal.
It's a deal. You know, and I I just.
I hate to say it, but I have this gut feeling of it.
Well, I know. Do you feel FAI happening all over again?
You're not wrong.
Change is hard. Everybody likes change.
It does scare me.
And then usually there's just this little period of time where the change gets to be a little bit better and then the good things start coming through about it.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm concerned that the good things aren't coming through fast enough.
Right. Well, and and it just seems like there's problem after problem after problem. And if it was all the same problem, that's one thing.
One thing.
Full when it's all these different problems. I'm like, oh.
When you have it on your end and their end, that you can't check it as immediately as you used to either.
Right.
Doesn't help make the employee feel any better when they're having to wait for the answers from you that they used to could get.
Right.
And so it's very concerning to me.
If they're working with all these other counties like they said.
And the school, and the school.
Yeah, and school, this can't be original to us.
Yeah.
Right. I don't know.
I mean, we all run for pretty similar operations.
Right.
Everybody write their questions down for next week and we'll get them in here and we'll ask questions. And if there's any employees that has have a specific issue. That they encountered that we need to ask that specific question on behalf of our employees.
Who's gonna invite them in and make sure that they're available on a vacation, not gone.
They've got plenty of people that should be on vacation. We can. I mean, we'll contact them and find out who's available. Cause you'll know who you want. Request the people we want. Just good. Be in attendance and make sure they can be in attendance. And if it's not next week, it'll be the prompt.
Soon as we can.
Yes.
This is urgent. We've got people that are.
I just wanna make sure something.
Yeah, alright.
And if one of them's like.
One of us too, we could call them.
If it's the case where somebody gets sick because of this.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's not good. That's not good.
Not good.
Yeah, I will get a hold of them and.
Well, hang in there.
Thank you, Amy.
This will be easy.
Thank you. Let's get them.
Thank you for bringing those things to our attention, because we don't know unless somebody lets us know. So. Alrighty, so who has anything exciting they wanna share in their committees? Oh, they totally do. Uh, let's talk about this Department of Energy that was in here. Does anybody feel like we need to fill this out, send it back to them or? You guys to look at that?
Let's get that. Let me just send us, right? That's what you've already sent us.
They sent the email out and then I printed it all, so. Did anybody respond to it or? And then.
They're just courtesy, letting us know that they're they're, well, moving ahead with that wind ground jersey.
That that employee thing.
That's what I see.
I can stamp it and get. This doesn't have any wage. It has no thirty seven and a half, forty or.
Okay, there's a box check right here. As on call.
Okay, so we don't care. DRN. On our way out. Alright, other than that. That's not what PRN stands for, but. So somebody wants me to sign this Carpathian, uh, partial self funding benefits. Is there anything else we need to discuss? Cause just based on our.
Amy send that out?
Just based on our.
Alright, I saw it.
Did Amy send that to you? Well, it was just in the packet. There's a tag on the back. Yeah.
Always.
Yeah.
Over.
I just sent this, like, this one here though. Correct?
Right, I just sent that way to know who it's from.
Amy, thank you. I like to sign just any old thing you guys know about. Wasn't gone for a while. Alrighty, nobody has to witness me or anything like that. I always witness you. Alrighty.
That's her job.
So Kyle, you got anything?
Not really, but just real quick. Anybody? I'm gonna take Louise and Jake over to this new building after this meeting was over to do a walk through because they. Already kinda had a couple changes in electrical. Mental changes, but there's a lot of it done already and I just wanted to get hammered down.
We had the changes or the electrician did?
Louise, she eliminated some cabinets and now she wanted a different outlet put in and and I don't.
Right.
And I think we just need to go, a couple of us, all of us, I don't care, we can all go over there and just walk through, take them to along and say, tell us what you want. Right now.
I'll go with it.
Yeah, cause you have a key. I don't.
Louise has a key too.
Okay, but Louise was very simple. I just think it just needed to move the outlet a couple foot higher.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's not a big deal.
Put her.
But he gives size.
But I just want her in there to say, uh, okay, that's where my desk is gonna be, you know, when they want an outlet there. And I think we've kinda already hit all that, but. It's easier to do it now.
Make sure everybody's on the same page. And make sure I identify the one above there.
Yeah, yep. And then. Still up in Limbo, but I just been Lisa Gallagher, who was. Ben Bonn Vaughn reached out to me and he's having a meeting with the FSA office next Tuesday morning at eight AM. To go over the new CRP contract and his responsibilities of that. He said, we should be there.
I can.
Lisa just said, we don't need to be there.
Okay.
So it may change. It may change. Maybe next Tuesday morning, Amy might be at the FSA office for a quick meeting.
I I will tell you, I guess I did bring it over, but Lisa sent me. All of our land and I guess, um. I questioned, had some questions for her. And so she sent me each one of our parcels.
Oh, good.
What type of CRP they are in.
Oh, good.
And, uh. What all the acronyms mean.
Alright.
Okay, cause I was just unfamiliar. I was out there and I was asking questions. What does this mean? What is this?
That's good.
And she said that she answered, maybe she had some people that she worked with and said, hey, you answered that wrong. And so that's why she did it in writing that it said, hey, Craig, this is exactly what you guys have.
Okay.
Okay, I should have brought that.
Well, yeah, bring it next week or whatever. Yep. Then we could.
Yeah, we can put it in the file.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, nope, nope. I should have brought it. Was gonna bring it. It's on my desk at my office.
No, other than that, uh. Just I was out. Talking with the grading crew yesterday for a little bit. We're moving right along. West of my house, so. Helped them secure some phone numbers and made a couple of phone calls for them because they were, didn't know they were getting false reports about. This guy wanted to chop his corn and wasn't even their guy that owned the ground there, so. Help them get some of that stuff straight away so they could keep moving. Didn't do the work.
Yeah.
Me too.
That's. Other than that, that's all I have.
Moving along pretty quick.
Yeah, they got the one and a half mile done and they're moving to the the second mile, the mile limit, so. They'll be there for a while. A lot of trees. Lot of trees to tear out, so.
Do with the, do they take a whole, burn them, midbury or maybe? They burn them first, right?
They're all, they're, put them in there and burn them. The ones left, they. Yep. They used to put them in the road. Oh, really? If I could take you and show you where that went terribly wrong.
Okay.
When they started breaking down or, does it not break down?
They won't break down.
Under whether they're not getting air, so they don't break down.
They'll just stay the same size and everything they were when they put them in the ground. And then. Twenty years of erosion, you start hitting them again. Really flooded up the trees. But again, we're the thing I'm hardly thinking.
You know, them people are asking, where the hell do all these trees come from?
Pretty historic. Believe them there long enough, we'll have our own, uh. Someplace.
Petrified forest.
Petrified forest. That's disappointing. I thought I was gonna be a grander. That's all I have.
Alright, very good. Watch your back, watch your.
Uh, just briefly, I had, uh. Twenty eighty, early childhood meeting last Tuesday at noon. They're still trying to hire, uh, Sarah. Uh, they say she's the president of the Children's Imagination Station Board. And so she's been filling in when we have a director's report. They're trying to hire someone. They didn't have someone that they made an offer to. And that person declined because then their current employer raised their pay and they're, yeah. So they're kinda back to square one to try to hire a director for the Children's Imagination Station. So I wanted you to be informed of that. And I did talk and meet the new superintendent for Dennison, Kim, I think it's Beera Net. Deck is how it's pronounced. But I just told her that she has an open invitation to stop by the. Board supervisor meetings. I said anytime after ten, you'd be happy to just introduce ourselves and have her introduce herself to us. She wrote it down, so I'm assuming maybe, I'm sure she'll, her place, just get started. But, uh, so did get a chance to meet her. So that's all I got.
Good. Uh, I will just go real quickly. Uh, I had a de-cap, uh, meeting and so, uh. Director Garcia is focusing on her redistribution of the regions and so we do believe. We have the official map. So Crawford is over here with all of these counties. That's our new district. And so I think it's, it's seen some changes, but, uh. She's focusing on getting that done. Uh, she wants the regions to still continue to take care of the, uh. Uh, school-based mental health until she gets all this done, which, um, Plains area saw a hundred and eighteen students in the fourth quarter. So it's a program that would really have to make sure somebody. Is looking after it because it seemed to have kinda lost, uh, they thought that they was maybe doing it, but she says we just need to keep taking care of mental. Uh, school-based mental health until they get this redistricting all settled. So otherwise it was a long meeting, but, uh. Uh, funding is not nearly where it needs to be. And there are some programs that are just not being funded as as well as they were. Um, the previous years, but they're gonna try to figure out ways to keep these programs going, so. So I'm sure, but I think this is the official map. I wonder how many times. So Lion, Osme, Lucy, Sue, O'Brien, Clement, Cherokee, Vista, Woodbury, Ida, Manona, Crawford, Carol, and Harrison. Pretty big district. And I don't know when in government vigor is better, so. Anyway. Okay.
Uh, so we gotta talk to Paul. It's kind of the same deal. The DOT office is having trouble getting people to. Help administer projects, so. They found a way legislatively and I'm like, Paul. Plains is a lot better. They're only allowed so many employees, but yeah, they found a way to fund three more employees. That costs like five hundred thousand dollars to help administer projects around the legislative. So that's where bigger government seems to play. They they found a back door and to hire three more employees and. And I think Paul said one of them is a close to in relation to the head of.
Oh, brother.
So, you know, that's just one bridge or somebody's not gonna get now.
That's for sure.
Yeah, to help administer these projects when there's people that are sitting at home, yeah, because of COVID nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
So, yeah, that that scared me. Just the continuation of bigger government is not always better.
I can't believe that you have the choice whether you wanna go back.
Well, neither father, you know.
Right.
Big government.
Cause you just know it's not as productive.
Oh, the governor of Nebraska. Yeah, just declared you're all coming back, you're all coming back.
Just declared.
Maybe six weeks ago.
Yep.
That's what.
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
I have.
But I mean, you have to declare that now as a government. You can't just.
I I think, and I.
Expect people to come back after.
Then everybody's supposed to go back. But nobody really called her and said she had to, so she hasn't. That's too hard.
You know, you think about it, ISAC, and everybody's back to work.
Yeah.
Naco, and everybody, I'm still waiting to get a damn receipt. Naked. They never sent it. It said zero due. On my one, the one email I got back when I registered, never sent me a receipt. So I've been trying to get one since the come.
Well.
At least I can get ahold of my guy that's the ag, our ag stapper. He's having a whole time getting ahold of anybody.
If you call QuickBooks, you know, you just be hear people thinking they're in cubicles and now they're still calling, holding.
Actually, go ahead.
Phone calls from.
Which that's nice.
Like, well, you can hear dogs barking in the background.
Oh, yeah. Little kids.
Little kids and the doorbells ringing and, yeah, but, uh, that's fun to see about that, so. What'd you have, Ty?
Oh, shoot, well, I had no.
Official meetings.
I think.
This is kind of a dead, this is kind of a dead week a little.
Well, I had a week, since I had an open week, I had doctor's appointments lined up all week. I have my. I wanted every four months I gotta do a CT scan.
Oh, dear.
The, so that kinda stuff and everything's. Actually, she said, this is kinda interesting. I don't really what I meant. You know, the VA, UNMC, Buffett, Creighton, and I thought some, I thought one of the nurses mentioned they even got doctors from like. Up at Mayo that click in for all the cancer stuff, but they all kinda, whenever somebody's stuff comes in there. And mine was interesting because the lymph nodes are actually shrinking that have the cancer. And usually they just go inert. Something like, don't quote me, I'm probably getting this all wrong, but mine is shrinking. So it's a big topic. Well, this guy's doing that. We did something good. It's not, as long as they don't always shrink completely, I guess. But, uh, you know, this stuff, that was what I had last week, so. Interesting stuff there, but. You know, and I had, I had the calls last week. I had a number of them from the insurance. That's why I wanted to have Amy in here this morning to kinda. You know, cause I've, they're all telling me, they're talking to her, so I'm sure, you know, if we get a few calls, she's got a bunch.
Yeah.
And she obviously, and so, I mean, that was, that was my big concern coming into the day. And I think if we have them next week or the week after, we. Hopefully we can start getting some stuff fixed or we can start shopping. Never too soon to start shopping if we can't get, I mean. This is probably the one benefit that matters most to a family, you know, so I think it's something we gotta stay on top of. And I'd love to tell you that I understand everything about it, but insurance is one of them things that just. Feels like you're getting inundated with stuff.
Well, just the the picture they painted was.
Perfect.
Anything.
Maybe we should.
The way I saw it.
It could be true, wouldn't you say?
Really, uh, and I, you know, feared with the school using it for all those years that.
And maybe once you get used to it, you know, like you said, you know, just did the initial growing pains of a new system.
Change is always hard.
That fifteen hundred dollars where you gotta pay that all right away before you start getting, you know.
Kinda doesn't even make sense. But that's such a, you know. I mean, that sounds more like. Go into the doctor and they say, oh, you have to pay it all upfront. That just, it's just not music to anybody's ears, you know, and then you have to wait for them to reimburse and. I don't like anything about any of that, so.
Well, you know, and Jim got ahold of me, you know, he had one elbow fixed and stuff and he's getting, you know, and I don't know if he'll do the other one. He was damn upset about how that all worked with the insurance.
Oh, boy.
I mean, now if they're gonna start neglecting their health. And I heard something else in that grave by him where somebody's condition got worse because they just got so frustrated with it. And I don't know, this was a pretty short timeframe in a few months, but, you know, so is that really what caused more problems? But. You know, if it's in their head that way, that's not good either, so. I mean, they're having trouble getting explained to them, but if Amy's having trouble getting access to what she needs, what do you think it's like for somebody that don't do this every day?
That, that's just unacceptable. If she used to could push a button and have what she needs and now she's gotta fill out a form and remember a password and wait five days to get it back. That's unacceptable.
Well, and you gotta assume that her having access to things probably helped expedite.
Yeah.
People's issues and problems we've gotten dealt with. So I don't know. Anyway, that was the one thing that I probably had the most of last week. If you're wanting me to eat up some time, I could try to talk about some of the stuff from Naco. And I don't talk about the one, I didn't talk about the one committee mine at all, Military and Veterans Affairs. They tend to focus more on the communities that have like a military base, you know, active duty base or something. And then. Obviously there's a huge Air Force base right there by Tampa, so they've, they've actually got it to where their board of supervisors and. I suspect to be, can't remember what she called herself, but it was like a liaison for the local government. That's basically her whole function is to coordinate projects. Help with housing issues and all the things that they need from the base. The base needs from the county and the cities. You know, and and, uh, they've really got a heck of an organization there. And then like where the base helps with. Different organizational things having, now they've got a really nice museum done. I didn't get a go to it. Different organizational things, having, now they've got a really nice museum done, I didn't get a go to it, I was busy in another meeting, and I wanted to travel up, they were gonna take us up to the museum and the war memorial they had there. And then be able to talk with some of the Air Force people there, but I didn't get a go to that, but uh they're uh. Still working on more of the green light stuff, you know, and and helping some funding, um. There's some different things where they're. We've got a more urban presence in that committee, and that's some of the time I, some of the things they work on, I just kind of wonder. I mean, really, it isn't our job as counties to worry about the the force, you know, and its ability to be ready, you know, but obviously, it's a concern if you're an old warrior, you know, and. What's going on in the military and and that we did talk to some about that, but they don't really have speakers come into that, you know, and I suppose since that ain't our wheelhouse, but. You know, I mean, you you kind of wonder about the readiness and is there things that we can do as communities, you know, I mean. When I went in, I remember my drill sergeant saying, you know, and I didn't think they knew I was there, and and they picked me to be a squad leader right away, you know, and and uh. Or I should say the second week, you know, and I thought I was hiding pretty good, nobody knew I was there, and he picks me out, and anyway, he said they watch the Midwest kids. Cause we come from farms and stuff like that a lot of times, or even the kids that work at the live in town come out and help on the farm, so there's a lot, a better work ethic and a better. Sense of cooperation comes from that a lot of times, and I I. I met a lot of kids from the cities too, and I mean, I don't think that we were much different than them, but that was what, that what the drill sergeant told me. And we said, you know, we kind of whip everybody into shape eventually, but maybe there's things that we can do to help with their recruiting, and one of the things that I was saying, is there something that we need to do as communities? That would help with the recruiting, the right kind of kids and get, cause we got kids that that don't, you know, that leave here. So I mean, what if they leave here to go to military and then come back like I did, you know? I mean, they come back with a whole different perspective on life, whole different understanding, sometimes with problems that they wouldn't acquire in any other profession, mind you, but. They can come back here and be, you know, leaders of the tomorrow, I mean, you look at a lot of our senators and and representatives, whether it's in the state house or in the national, or a lot of them got military passed, you know, I mean, and. Call you're an old soldier, you know how that is, and I mean, I, and Terry, you know, would you ever. Say that that didn't benefit you in what you do now, I mean, every one of us, so I remember some of the questions that I've been asking in that, is there things that we can do? After I seen that, how that community is working so well with the Air Force base, so I thought, you know, maybe that's something that we need to do, I mean, instead. And I think that our guards has tried different programs over the years, I mean, I remember when they tried that community outreach stuff of us here with employers. And uh. That's been. Ten years ago or more, maybe longer, but uh the uh. You know, outreach to the kids more, you know, different programs that would be able to, you know, we don't have, I guess off, it would be our closest active duty base. Can't think of anything else that's around here, Fort Riley's a ways off, you know, so it's, you you're out of touch with the active duty thing in an area like this, so. I don't know, it was just some of the things that I've been asking questions about on the Military and Veteran Affairs Committee, you know, I mean, they're really working hard with different things to help. The the people like Louise out here, you know, to have better outreach for veteran stuff, but most of the time we talk about military base stuff, so. Really doesn't apply to us as much, but I like to keep my two cents worth in there, you know? And uh from the rural's perspective, you know, since we're a rural county. But uh let's see what else, I mean, the ag stuff, I mean, that was, we talked about the Farm Bill Summit. I mean, that's just in a holding pattern, you know, people talk like, well, we hope something this fall, yeah, there's nothing happening until next year, there ain't gonna be anything happen through this election. Especially now it's chaotic as it is, and then you, then you get the transition period, so I'm, I don't see anything happening there. Everybody will be preparing, you know, could have a whole turnover in the Senate or not, or could have a whole turnover in the in the House or not. And that could affect how things happen in that farm bill, you know, and there are things that I'm looking at in that, and I keep pressing on Fiendstru and and Senator Ernst's office, in fact, I. Did contact Senator Ernst's office, the the uh. Veterans E E M S with veterans payments, you know, with that EMS has to come out and get guys that are on V A. Medical care like I am, sometimes it's hard to get paid, you know, and so I I reached out to Senator Ernst's office about that, you know, and and then through Naco, we were talking to some different people that were from the V A. In D C, so I also reached out to them, so there were some of the different things I've been kind of dealing with there. So and if you, if you guys get questions that, you know, ag and the military veterans, then international economic development, my three primary. My bigger committee thing, you know, and then. I'm not, I'm I'm on, I'm vice chair of uh ag and food service, food sa- food safety is my new committee assignment, and uh. That is uh. I don't know for sure what all is gonna be on a cow stickers on that with me, you know, I bet you know, up there to soothe. So I'll, I'll, I'll let you know more, I just found out that that's one of the committees I'm on, and uh. Otherwise, I'm on pretty much the same thing, so I'll just keep plugging, if you guys come up with anything in that area. Or any of the others, I'll, I'm getting to know enough people on the other things, transportation, uh Wade. From over in uh White Wade Weiss, who's an engineer over in Green County, a good friend of Paul's. Um I I get along with him really well, we we get together quite a bit at the conferences and uh. What's that?
Did you tell him?
Yeah, I tried to steal him already, he's probably as close to, he's not that far over. Yeah, well, uh Paul's, Paul's trying to help us, I was just done, you know, I know. Yeah. But uh, yeah, Wade's, Wade's good, but he he's kind of my peers over in the transportation room, yeah, you know, kind of talked to him quite a bit about what they're doing, what's up, you know, my. So those are the big ones that we got, you know, some of the urban stuff, you know, I mean, I I really haven't developed contacts in that yet, you know, it takes a while to get to know everybody and. And I'm starting to figure out how the politics of Naco's works, it's a little, little different than ISAC's, but. There's some similarities, I mean, you want to know people that are on the the board. Then the people that go into the, on their, your second, or yeah, that's the second vice, and then the first vice, and that's how they progress into being the president and they go. Well, if you wanna have an important assignment where you can affect some legislation in the future, you can make sure you start with make the advice, the second vice, you know, and. And that, cause that's who appoints you each year, you know, and I still gotta have people that are interested in being in it, so. So I get asked, I I got asked to put my name in on the board and stuff last by some people that are mine, and I said, I ought to make sure I got a job, yeah. Well, if I got a job next year, I'll put my name in. Gotta get through the election cycle first, you know, but it's just, there's a lot of. You know, sometimes there's a lot of information coming at me, I mean, I get tons of emails from them all week long, and uh. It's good stuff, I mean, it's helping call, you know, a lot of alerts, please call your senator or your congressman and and hit them up about certain kinds of things, you know, especially if it's ag, because Joni's on the Senate ag. And features on the uh House ag, so we get, if anything, ag, I mean, I get a lot of emails about that, so. So please just remember that if something comes up. Hit me up. Paul's gone, isn't he?
Yeah, I've been told there's something going, the door's locked down there, cause I needed to talk to Paul this morning, the door was locked.
They had alternate date. Pay paving company or the paving.
So I'm gonna guess that the whole office is gone and that.
Ben too.
Well, you have to.
We have a.
Time and date for that notice of public hearing.
That's unusual to have that on there, nobody's coming.
Well, I was training.
We just need to set a date.
We'll just do that.
Date time set, and then we'll move on, alright.
And nobody.
No news is good news, man, so, perfect. Oh, you had it.
Oh, what's the rule, Terry, how many days are?
Alright, so Paul kind of has it set up already in his notice, um he did uh ten A M on August twentieth, if that works. For you all, that would be two weeks from today.
Good for that, I'll make a motion to uh second. Public hearing publication therefore related to proposed profit exchange between Crawford County and the City of Manila for August twentieth at ten A M.
Alright, any further discussion on said notice? I'll call motion on favor, aye.
Alright.
Oppose same sign, Chair votes aye, so we will have that, that's open hearing on August twentieth, ten A M. Please post.
I have no reports.
Alright, very good, alright, so the next item is discuss take action on opening the bits of the generator for the community health building. Uh, we have one turned in, filed. And. It is. J P Electric City Center Generator, uh sixty K W three phase gen and four hundred amp automatic transfer switch. Exactly what we had in our R F P.
Four hundred amp?
Community Health Building?
Community, but that what we're calling it now?
The city center.
Well.
Let's give it a new name today.
I still.
Community Services, cause you got the V A in there, Community Services.
Think they get to Neiman, but just saying that out loud. Why bite your tongue when you don't have?
They have both of them in there.
So you guys an option, one is the sixty K W for fifty six thousand, three hundred twenty seven dollars and eighty six cents.
How much was it again?
Fifty six, three seventy, three twenty seven, eighty six.
Still gave us the option, so.
And that's install?
Yeah.
That was the sixty K W?
That's a sixty K W.
Got it.
That should power.
Well, the other option was a seventy K W, sixty K W, I, well, my understandings would cover. Everything except possibly some of the air conditioning part if we had a outage during the summer. So the seventy K W would cover everything.
We're good. Price difference?
Well, that's the other thing, and I think that's maybe why he left this each together, cause the price difference amounts to. Thirty seven hundred dollars. I'm I'm guessing that's why he left that in there, cause it's really ain't amount, I mean.
I don't know, a lot, and that would cover everything, so they could work.
I have no excuse.
You're funny.
I guess what I thought sixteen would have covered that whole building, but there's.
I think it will ninety eight percent of the time.
You know, if you're a hundred and ten degree day, it might not, or if you're forty below, it might have.
He'll be fine.
He'd be fine, but that's.
Bower fans at that point, so.
And all we really need is to make sure that our freezer keeps going, so.
Yeah, that's the big thing.
And that uh kicks room stays and that.
Still five sixty K W, but it was thirty seven hundred.
I am too, save that for, we're gonna have.
Thirty seven hundred here, five hundred there.
Soon it'll help pay for one of the other things we haven't seen coming yet, so.
The bid. Seems a little confusing, I mean, it is.
Cause he total totaled it down.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's just that document does that, I'm sure it's a form that he uses, and it just does it.
Yeah, it's an either or on that.
Right, so it's one side or the other, not the total.
Right, don't look at the total, I shouldn't. I say we owe it a sixty. So we have a motion for the sixty.
So it'd be a natural gas.
The fifty.
You made a motion, Ty?
I'm, I'll make the motion that we purchase the sixty K W installed for the. Community, Community Services Building.
Fifty six thousand, three twenties.
That motion for the Community Services Building.
Okay.
Community Services?
Community Services.
I love it, well, on our.
I know.
Building as well, what uh.
Services, no, we gotta keep, we gotta keep Louise.
Services building.
Community Services Building.
Otherwise, the community health will just claim it all.
Alright, alrighty, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Uh if I saw call the vote on favor.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, Chair votes aye, Assistant, rude, alright, so we can let.
Remind me that Jake, you sent that email out last week, and the, in regards to that, maybe split with a four week lead time on that, and. I don't know if I did step on anybody's, I said, well, four weeks should be soon enough, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Probably, probably.
I mean, I think we're gonna need it prior to that.
Unfortunately, what was he questioning whether to go ahead and order it or not?
No, then he, he was thinking he probably needed, and.
You approved it though.
No, but he was, they found out it was a four week lead time, but the. The other one, he could get right away, that won't work to the specification that he needed, so. I said, well, four weeks is probably plenty fast.
You'll be painting in four weeks.
Well, we're we're still waiting for our electrical to come through that wall, so they can't. Try a wall yet, so it could have that little mini splitter in there, but we're still not gonna be able to use it, cause electricity won't be hooked hooked up yet, so the four weeks will go by really fast, once we start pulling.
Yeah, like.
Kind of small potatoes.
Four weeks.
We can, we can work around.
It's gonna be nine months, although then I'd.
They ever want us to build a new building in the county?
Say no.
Do it after I go.
It'd be easier.
You think it'd be easier to do it to us?
I think you're right. Alright.
Shop in Manila pretty fast.
We'd hire.
Yeah, great.
Uh discussion, take action, appointment of Sherri Vaughn to the Region Twelve Housing Authority Board uh for a term from October first, twenty twenty four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Didn't make that move.
She willing to serve?
Yes.
Alright, alrighty, any further discussion, otherwise I'll call the vote, on favor, aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Any opposed, same sign, Chair votes aye, thank you, Sherri for the public hearing.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, alrighty, so what do we have for uh citizens input? Everybody has loved us, we have no one in the audience left to the building, anything, anybody else needs to finish up discussing this morning before we.
Maybe we should let me talk like that every meeting.
We got it.
You said away.
One, one thing I would like to bring up, that um since we're together, is. When I first got on the board, I think one of our first actions, so it would have been back in January of last year. Was we talked about incentives or for volunteer firefighters, that sort of stuff, as far as the tax credit or the tax exemption, uh something like that, and. Although we didn't pass it, it was something I think that the board still wanted to, at some point in time, bring it back up again.
Yes.
You bet.
And so I think we should do that.
Alright.
And I've been. Trying, I've found, been doing, just doing some some research and trying to just find some actual forms that other. Counties use, not necessarily in Iowa, but like this one is just a volunteer firefighter EMS tax credit, it says real estate tax credit on it, and this is the actual form. Here that I think this was in. Um, New York State, this is what they use for uh the application that they use. And as I'm doing my reading and stuff, I keep coming up with the fact that the I R S. Claims that these tax credits or even an exemption that you would get. Um if it's over, I think, six hundred dollars that. Claim it as income, and even if the county, if it's over six hundred dollars or more, the county would be required to send them a ten ninety nine. And if it's less than the six hundred dollars, according to me, cause I took a, put a phone call into my account, this is, this is Langato, and I just said, hey, Elaine, is this. True that the I R S would do that, and she said, yeah, um if it's less than six hundred dollars, then it would just be kind of up to the individual. To see if they wanted to um show that as income or not. And so it seems like it's a. I'm gonna keep researching to see if there's just a better way to go about doing it than.
I'm gonna keep researching to see if there's just a better way to go about doing it than. Either a tax credit or an exemption. I don't know if there is, but I'm not gonna falter in trying to find something else that we can do.
The thing, maybe you know your limit then, is, you know, I mean, under six hundred dollars.
Five hundred ninety nine dollars is kind of our limit.
I wanna find something that helps young volunteers that possibly don't own real estate. That's kind of where we got hung up a little bit.
A little bit, and I was, and I thought about that and thought that you, we could give it, um. We're just, I guess we'd have to discuss that, but I was thinking about if we gave the tax credit to the owner of the individual. Of the, of the property, and then the owner of the property agreed to pass that on to the renter, if the renter, you know, showed them, hey, here, I'm a volunteer fireman.
That gets complicated though.
That that gets extremely complicated, but I understand there is a way, there there needs to be a way for us. To do it for people that do just renting homes, cause a lot of people that are just starting out, young families, that's who, we we don't want to make it just a reward. And thank people for being a volunteer. We want to incentivize new young people, because we don't have as many young people in Crawford County as we used to have, so.
I think that.
Then you're right, the other sticking point, if you remember Gene was, like, if you're in West Side's Fire Department and you live a mile and a half east of town, hell, a mile east of town.
And you're not in Crawford County.
You're in Crawford County, so we can't really help them.
So one of the things that.
That was one of our stickers.
Somebody had talked to me about back then was, you know, an incentive for extra training that you would just give us a stipend at the end of the year for the, uh, training that they got. And for the calls that they went on and the meetings that they attended, and just keep track of how active they are and give a little.
And like, do it with the EMS.
Ten dollars, you know, for, uh, training, you know, if you get to be a firefighter, one is it.
There still have to be that five hundred ninety nine dollar cap.
Well.
Would that be?
Probably.
Be like anything else, yeah, but still.
The training. They submit a bill for the training, say it's seven hundred dollars. We could cut a check for the training.
If they had to pay for a training.
Well, the county would just be paying for the training, then you wouldn't have to send a ten ninety nine.
Send it right to the training person that's.
I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying you wouldn't have, if you actually paid the expense.
I guess some of that would depend on who currently pays for the training.
Right.
Who does that?
I mean, the state of Iowa does.
Cause who are we helping? Are we helping another taxing entity? Or are we helping?
There's the trying to, I'm not, they're all done, but they were working on it. But I I think that that takes care of, that kind of clicks all of the boxes. If you kind of incentivize, uh, more training and you incentivize, the more meetings you go to and the more calls. You're rewarding correctly for that, rather than putting it through your. I kind of like, that that was brought up, you know, way back.
They might not show up for anything at the end of the year though.
Well, that's my point that I'm gonna make here, for my twenty seven years that I spent on the volunteer fire department. It's still gonna take some buy-in by the local authority, have a jurisdiction that says these people are active and out. And.
Right.
In the, in the, cause. You probably remember too, there was people that showed up at meetings just because there was a meal served out.
Oh, yeah.
Never participated in anything at the meeting.
See, that's the problem.
See, that's where the sticky part gets in there, you know?
But I think that we, if we can keep throwing stuff at the wall, something's got.
Like you're something else, but I appreciate Craig for bringing that back to the meeting to talk. I mean, the state of Iowa does have a, they, state of Iowa does have a two hundred fifty dollar tax credit for volunteer firemen and volunteer EMS. They qualify. So I do, I don't know if we have many people that use that, do you know?
I think you gotta apply for it like we do the vet thing with.
I think it's when you get your taxes returned, you just, they ask, it's one of the questions on the.
You say you're a firefighter and you get a tax credit.
Yeah, I know, there's no verification, but.
That's wrong, but that's what it is. So I think if we just keep writing down our ideas for, you know, a combination of things, just, I really do think we need to start appreciating and showing. Uh, volunteers and get some younger people involved and.
Sheriff was a magic wand.
I know, I know, everything's got a, but what if and.
Right, according to the Iowa Firefighters Association, the qualifying conditions for volunteer firefighters for the state of Iowa tax credit. You must be an active member of an organized volunteer fire department in Iowa, must meet the minimum training standards established by the Fire Service Training Bureau, a division of the Iowa Department of Public Health. Uh, you can be a paid firefighter fighter who volunteers for another fire department. Uh, is eligible for the credit and a person who volunteers as a firefighter for a fire department by which they are employed is eligible for the credit. If they're employed in a capacity other than a firefighter. So and and here, this is on the Iowa Firefighter Association website, but here they got a thing that you can click on in a blank tax credit form that.
And it just says. Comes off their state taxes and then.
Yeah, so so if you owe two hundred fifty dollar state tax. Right, and this form just says, to whom may concern, firefighter's name, being a member, uh, in good standings for the blank fire department, served twelve months of the calendar year. Um, just hereby claim a tax credit, two hundred fifty dollars was organized by, authorized by this. The Iowa code number, and then they ask me to sign by the fire chief, fire department, and then the fire fighter itself would sign it. That's what they said, yeah.
There we go.
Well, if the governor has her wish, that won't be worth a darn anymore. We'll have zero pack income tax in Iowa at some point. I don't know how that'll work, but.
Interesting.
But we'll probably always have property taxing, but I, you know, I think we need to try to figure something out.
Let's just keep out, hammer out there, I think the city of Vanilla has a, that they award their volunteer. I was talking to our guest a little bit, so if we pick some of the good from everybody's plan, we should come up with the. We'll just keep hammering, talk about it every week until it gets something else add. Everybody bring.
You know, since we're doing that, I mean, it's emergency services, it's, I mean, we would count EMS as well, I'm sure. But like, I don't think they have any right now. But even like the volunteers that do the ride along stuff with the sheriff's office, you know, they 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 don't get paid while they're doing that. Trainee thing, do they?
Where are they working at or what?
You know, you know, he had two of them there, when I first got on the board, and the one gives up.
They were, they were getting paid.
Were they getting paid? I didn't know, that's why I'm asking. Did they volunteer through that? I mean, I know they provided.
They were reserve officers.
Reserve officer.
They were paid, they were paid while on the clock.
Oh, were they?
Yeah.
Nice.
Just checking.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up. We'll keep, I think it's, we need to keep talking about, so otherwise I'll call for.
We'll also go over there, if we take all, everybody wants to get in there, let's just wait to. How you can make adjourn after we conclude the meeting over there, cause otherwise we'd have to come back here.
All right.
You just tell me, we'll just.
Two of us going.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't really have to be anywhere this early, I wasn't, I'd block.
Someplace you gotta go, cause more eyes the merrier, and it's like, I'm not trying to hide anything, so.
Let's go. Let's stroll. I did not bring my.
Rolling meetings.
Louise, so that we have that.
All right, I'll go get the weeds, that'll Jake. We'll head over there. Well, yesterday.
It should be today.
Yeah, no.
When I have a scoop and a grain, I'll do, it had to be, the way I was sweating, it would have to be, were you doing that yesterday afternoon?
What the heck were you thinking?
Look, it'd be done, and I, I needed it.
That day, that very day.
Truck was there and it was empty. And your Louis Mark gene.
I hope you had someone.
Wouldn't bother him a bit to be out.